This is going to be an organization.
Hey, Luke, Luke.
Hey, you drive the electric car?
Yeah, it drove me. It drove me and took a nap in the backseat.
I love it. How much battery you got left? You gonna make it home?
Do I need to follow?
Touch and go.
Can follow me at least to the county line.
Did you run the heat?
Oh, yeah.
Medium heat. See here.
Dang.
Just drained it.
And he's got insulated.
He's got a generator out there running right now, charging the backup. Missed you last month. I ain't had nobody pick on.
Yeah, I hope you didn't pick on Danielle.
No, I behaved. I was scared of her.
Me too.
Idiots.
You ready? Y'all ready? All right, folks. Thank y'all for coming out on this cold January night. I'll bring this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. If y'all all stand and join me in the pledge and the invocation.
Fill the Lord prayer. Our most gracious family, Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve you, our friends and family and this community. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this country. Thank you for homes and a warm place to lay our head down at night. And Laura, just lift up those who don't have those blessings, especially those who were hit with the different hurricanes and fires and wrecks and any other major tragedy that may have occurred in their lives. Lord, help us to appreciate those blessings continually that you continually pour over us and not dwell on the negative things in life that goes out, that were doled out. I would pray for our government, especially over all the newly elected and appointed, and that they will seek your guidance and will as they serve. While I lift up this meeting tonight and all the ones in attendance, I pray for a peace and a unity as we listen and discuss the county business. Help us to seek your will and that we will make wise decisions for this county. Lord, thank you for all the wonderful county staff and their part in helping make the mayor function and move forward. Help us to fill our vacant positions with the person of your choosing that is best for us and as soon as possible. Lord, I ask for traveling mercies as we leave here tonight as these things only press this name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Well, folks, January is our annual organizational meeting where we elect the officers and set rules and minutes. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to the county administrator.
Okay, Board, the floor is now open for nominations for chairman.
I'd like to make a nomination. Nominate David Phelps to return back as chairman.
Okay, Mr. Jones nominates Mr. Phelps. Are there other nominations for chairman? Going twice, are there other nominations for chairman? Is there a motion to close the nominations?
Make motion.
Mr. Jones makes the motion to close nominations for chairman. Any discussion on that motion? I call the question. All those in favor of closing nominations for chairman, raise your hand. Okay, you have five hands. The floor is closed. Okay, Mr. Phelps is the nominee. All those in favor for Mr. Phelps, raise your hand. All opposed, likewise? Any abstentions? It's three for Mr. Phelps, two abstentions, no opposition. Congratulations, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we'll do the same process again. I'll now open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Todd Robinson be vice chair.
Okay, motion to appoint to make Todd Mr. Robinson chair, vice chair. Are there any more nominations from the floor? And this time, I'll close the nominations. Need a motion to.
Let's close nominations.
Motion on floor to close nominations. All those in favor of closing the nominations for vice chair, raise your hand. Right, right, there's one person for vice chair. All those in favor of Mr. Robinson as vice chair, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Four and one abstain. Mr. Robinson abstain. Okay, motion carries four and one abstain. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Let's move on to the rest of the business at hand. We need to establish the dates and places and times for the regular meeting. You have those dates listed for 2025. The time will be 7:00 PM. The location will be right here at 16360 Dunn Street. I entertain a motion to accept that as a time and. What was the resolution? To pass the resolution? Just a motion to pass.
I make the motion. Pass the resolution as stated for the dates, times, and locations of the monthly board meetings as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. Any more discussion? Motion on the floor to set the times and dates and location of the monthly meetings. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five. And the rules of the board. Pretty much the same as we do every year. I entertain a motion to accept the. The rules of the board.
But to accept the rules of the board as written.
All right, motion on floor to accept the rules of the board as presented. Any more discussion?
Does administration want to highlight any of the changes that were back to the end or just for public knowledge? I mean, is there, I'm asking twice, is there anybody with minor suggestions and changes related that you want to call out?
There are some minor changes. Mr. Chairman, I'm looking for the highlighted version.
I think they were mainly, I know we saw them. They're mainly for clarity. There are any material. If you agree, there's no material and it's just acknowledging they were for clarity.
It was nothing significant. I remember one was to establish a timeline to get the supporting documentation into the clerk's office so the agenda would have time to be properly prepared. That was one that I remember. I don't remember anything of any substance. I think it was just really some housekeeping like Mr. Easter pointed out.
That change was at 12 calendar days prior to the meeting?
That's it. Yes, sir.
And then the location of posting of notice was added, right? On pay.
For clarity.
For clarity, yeah.
Just bringing it current.
Okay, motion on the floor, discussion. All in favor of accepting the board rules as presented with the amendments, raise your hand. Motion carries five. Did we miss anything, Mr. Monday?
No, sir. I think you got it. The committee assignments, yes, as far as the procedures.
Yeah, getting ready to do that here. Just make sure I didn't miss anything on the rules and stuff. All right, gentlemen, also, we also during this time, we pick our committee assignments. Any changes? I want to stay the same. Okay.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I got, I got a committee that I would like to draw.
Which one is that?
Steps. I was just noticing some, some, some on this list don't have two to three, three committee meetings a month where I'm at five.
I can pick up steps. That fits nicely with, with my others too.
Take steps.
I'm all for it too.
Is that the only change? All right, so we want to accept those committees as presented, and it would only change if Mr. Jones getting off of steps and Joseph. Y'all normally don't vote on it, but it's still. Consent of everybody, everybody's cool with that? All right. That should close our organizational meeting. All right, that brings us to the, um, agenda. Any amendments to the agenda? I have one. The planning commission reappointments, where I'd like to move into the consent agenda. Is everybody okay with that?
And Mr. Chairman, if I could mention the closed session, I placed that on the agenda as a placeholder in case anything changed with your candidates and you needed to go into closed session. I no longer have anything to share with you on that closed session from my perspective. You could delete that one unless you have a need to go in there to discuss anything with the county administrator.
I'm fine with your comment on the planning, I'm sorry, I'm just not seeing the planning commission ones, where's it coming off of to move to the?
10 six.
I was just looking at the agenda, so.
Oh, it's under.
Item 4E.
Oh, second page. Wasn't listed in the point, in the version that we got to build out, okay, must have changed after the version.
That's correct.
That's fine, all good.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, so it is in the consent agenda.
Yes.
Oh, let's see, remove.
I was, I was moving it to the consent agenda, but we won't discuss it, we can.
Where is it next? That's what I, I didn't see it. Oh, you're adding it, that's.
Need to add it to the consent agenda.
Adding is perfect, great.
All right, we good? I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda, removing the closed session and also moving the planning commission appointments to the consent agenda. And. Do I get a motion for that? Motion on floor to make those amendments to the agenda. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, motion on floor to approve the consent agenda. Any more discussion?
One question, is the planning commission documentation in the book? So that it can be approved in the consent agenda?
To have six.
CFP.
Okay, he must have amended it beginning before, since the version said, okay.
That one is an agreement.
Yes. Thank you, got it. All right. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, raise your hand. Five, motion carries. All right. That brings us to a monthly comment time, public comment time. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this? Or just, no, anybody wishing to speak about anything going on in the county? Please come up, state your name and address. Try to keep it to three minutes.
Hello, Martin Conkle, 16211 Church Street. Um, two things I just wanted to bring attention to that were in the packet this month. The first, you know, 2025, we're kicking off the new budget. I feel like we're in a much better place this year than we were last year, hopefully. But a few things, you know, looking at the budget expenditures versus cost, looks like we're a little high on personnel as what is projected will be versus what was appropriated. You know, one of the things that when we started and we did the tax raises and stuff, it was supposed to be, you know, this is a dire situation, we're pulling the parachute cord, et cetera. Supposed to be a very needs-based budget for all the departments and stuff. You know, but in the meantime, there wasn't any supposed to be more personnel hiring, even though I know there was a few that we had to that were in the budget. But since then, we've had some promotions within the county. I'm not trying to attack anybody, say maybe they shouldn't be appro, uh, promoted. I didn't see any appropriation request to change that part of the budget yet for that. So I just think, you know, we put a lot of the pain on the citizens in those tax raises to help make up the difference, get us out of the hole we're in. But I just want to be cautious, we got six months left and according to what's in the board, board packet that was presented for this month's meeting, looks like we might have a little few costs there we need to take a little closer look in. The second thing is in the board packet are the requested projects, especially being that in the water system, sanitation system. Now, I had a talk with a previous county administrator about the water system. He said, mentioned, you know, a few years ago, we looked into going with a UV system, it was too expensive, which I know UV systems are fairly expensive, but it is the latest and greatest technology in many ways. And we're still using added chemical to our, uh, to help sanitize the water. Yet within the board packet for request of projects, we have a new well for the, for that project, it states a new well, because there's not enough volume to add chlorination. So that's a $300,000 well if, and I'm just asking the question, I think it's a question that needs to be asked. If we went with that UV system previously, would we even need this, as this says, enough volume to add for the chlorination system? If we were able to get away from a lot of the chlorination going previously to the UV? And if going forward, if we are going to go to UV system as an upgrade, maybe we need to shelf this and take a bigger look at everything altogether. The second thing in there, same topic, is adding of wells to increase capacity of 332 residents. It's been said many times by this board, our water system operates at about 50% capacity. Why are we even considering adding additional wells to increase that capacity when the only housing project we have right now is the one behind my house for 49 homes, not 300 something? That's $800,000. So we have $1.1 million in upgrades to a, to our water infrastructure system, all stated there in the packet to add volume, to add capacity for a system that we're only running at 50% capacity. Just something I noticed and hopefully something that's looked into a little closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conkle.
Bobby Life, 1600 Richmond Road. Thank y'all for the opportunity. Uh, I'm gonna follow along with Martin a little bit since it's getting around to about budget time starting again for long and some things need to be thought about going down the road. The sanitation district, um, was voted on as, as a bond to install the system and bring it up to operation. I don't think it's anywhere in that bond that says that we're countywide is obligated to maintain, upgrade and continue pouring our money that we get nothing out of into it. Sanitation district gets all the benefits out of it, but the residents and the rest of the county have to pay for it. And I know this is the same old argument, but is it about time to start a sanitation board or something to begin to the point that where the sanitation district actually takes it over and the rest of the county doesn't have to pay for it? Just look at it as an option as moving forward. Um, some of these options that Martin's told me, upgrade, maintain. I mean, we paid for generators at the pumps and stuff like that for the sewage treatment and stuff over the past several years. When does it stop? Because it's gone way beyond what the bond was for and for what the county voted on. So, uh, it's about time for that to change, I think. And I'm hearing a lot of chatter about it around home and different places. I ask about it and people was like, why are we paying for it? I hear a lot of people complain about the rusty water and stuff like that. Well, then there's got to be something done, so we talk to the county and get something done. Well, that comes back out of our pocket again. My well goes out, my pump goes out, do I come to the county? Did they pay for my pump, right? No, so just thoughts of being moving forward and, uh, the agenda is to look at, maybe reorganize a little bit how it functions so I can get a plan on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mike.
The sanitary district, as you know, is in my, is in my district. Feel for sending those citizens to talk to me, it's very rare any of them ever contact me and I have answers to all those questions.
Doesn't surprise me.
You just referred, um, people talk to me all the time, but not about sanitary district.
Well, that doesn't surprise me, because I, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Easter, I talk to people all the time and they say they won't talk to you.
Great.
That's all I can say, that's the.
So I have answers to all those questions, if they actually want to know, they talk to somebody that has the answers.
Yeah, so the only thing I can say is it's brought up and I brought it. That's, that's the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Likes. All right, anybody else? Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, my name is William Easter, I live 6657 Buckskin Creek Road, Cheatersville. Uh, first thing I want to say, we, I'm on the landfill advisory board. Pinges on it. We had a real good meeting the last time. People finally have started coming to the meeting. We had a suggestion brought to our attention that we change the meetings to at light. That's going to be done. We need people to come. But anyway, uh, my main thing for being here is that we need to, as Mr. Light said, and Mr. Conkle, we're moving into the next year's budget. Ever since last year's budget, every meeting that I've been to, I've missed one. It's been requests for more money, more money, more money. I handle a budget of a marshal service fugitive unit. We didn't get to add for money again. Whoever's preparing these budgets need to know what they're doing. Don't come back later on and want to add 5%, 10%. That doesn't work. I mean, where's the money going to come from? These people that have these jobs to prepare a budget should know what they're doing and prepare the budget accurately or not get any more money. Now, I don't mean an emergency situation like the fire department here, the truck burns up, boy. Police car gets totaled, you, you got to take care of the citizen, but this stuff of this, every time you turn around, people want more and more and more, but they didn't put it in their budget. It needs to stop. Y'all can't balance a budget when people going to come with 5% or 10% again. How you going to balance a budget? So, uh, that's just, that's the way I feel. I think we need to make sure when we do this next year's budget, which y'all have done a wonderful job. I'm going to tell you now, I wouldn't do what y'all doing, y'all, I can tell you now, y'all got cussed, but not by me. Uh, because I had to do a, a state budget, which is the same type of deal. People, you, you, if, my daddy always said, if you please 51%, you done right good. And y'all had a tough job and you have a tough job this year because you don't know what the economy is going to do for, for good. But anyway, thank y'all for what you do. Uh, I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'll close the public hearing this time, we'll move on. Ms. Worley?
Good evening. Uh, to give an update on VDOT activities this month, our crews have regraded dirt roads throughout the county as needed. Um, they've done shoulder and brush trimming really throughout the county, cutting back right of way at the end of, um, the season, but did one spot particular, Genito Road and Soapstone Road. Um, and then largely we've been engaged in emergency operations over the last month for snow and ice response. Um, for traffic studies and special requests, um, I have now received approval from traffic engineering for farm equipment signage on Reed Rock, Genito and Volksbridge, and those signs have been ordered, so we'll have those installed um, as soon as they come in indicating tractor sign with mile, certain mile ahead, um, for those locations. Um, and then I've provided the draft agreement related to advertising sign removal, and I know that's on your agenda next, so happy to answer any questions about that, but that's all I have for my report this evening. Yes, sir.
I'll blow lane, I just got a phone call.
For, to regrade, yeah. Yeah, with, uh, snow and ice, I'm sure we need to revisit all the dirt roads again. Yes, sir.
I told them to get their tractor out there, they said it, that baby doesn't like it, but, but anyway, I was joking.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
I've been asked by several citizens, the intersection of Route 38 and 614 at the ball field.
Mm-hmm.
They say that it's, um, it's a intersection where if you are, I reckon westbound 38.
Okay.
More or less got to pull out into 614 to see what.
Does he sight distance?
Pine tree, the road years ago was all the closer to the ball field and then they redid that.
Okay.
So there's a blind spot there.
Okay.
And we just had accident there last week, I think it was last week. That Paul Woodacre struck that pole toe right there and it saved me, can't see. You don't pull into traffic or you can see what's down the road.
Okay.
So if you could look at, have someone to look into that, although that is a bit jurisdiction, isn't it?
Lines right there, so it depends on what's, the lines right there, it's on which side it's on, yeah.
That's me.
But I had some calls, mentioned that, they can bring that up in the board meeting and that.
Yep, absolutely, we'll take a look at it and see where the right of way line is and if there's sight distance, it could be cleared. Yep.
Anybody? We go hit that? No, I'm going to do it right now. I just got a question I'm going to ask. I got a few calls on why roads hadn't been plowed.
Okay.
And I cooled them down because I knew they were out plowing roads and, and once people drove on them and packed it, it was ice and it, they had it. But I, I think y'all did a great job of getting the roads done.
Thank you, appreciate it, I'll pass that on to our crews.
And I hope we ain't got to do it again no more this year.
Me too.
May I, while we on there? Or, or y'all planning on getting all the tree limbs and stuff out the side of the roads once winter's over with or whatever, because there's a lot of pine and field limbs that partially in the road, you know.
From the snow, yeah.
Cause of the snow.
Yes, sir, yeah, we'll, um, probably in the spring be doing brush cutting, that'll be a heavy emphasis for us, so, yeah.
All right, well, while you're there, Ms. Worley, we go move into the roadside discussion. Mr. Robinson, this was more aimed at the signs in the right of way. Did you have any questions or do you want to talk the discussion off?
Yes, sir, I do have a question. What is? The VDOT right of way, I know they very dependent on the road, so like two-lane roads, country back roads, do you, how much, do you get a rough idea of what we have?
Yeah, I, I mean, it does vary a lot. Um, so when roads were brought into the state system through the Bird Act in 1932, I think, they were conveyed with a 30-foot wide prescriptive easement. And so probably a lot of roads like that in Amelia have that 30-foot wide, 15-foot from the center line out um, prescriptive easement for us to do maintenance, um, unless there's been some project since then that required us to acquire right of way. If we were to acquire right of way now, it's usually more like 50-foot, um, that we would, um, acquire for a roadway. So it, it does vary depending on the road.
On 153 and 360. What do we have there, do you have a clue?
I don't know off the top of my head. I, I mean, honestly, county, um, uh, circuit court office should have the plat records. Um, we might have, um, right of way. Circuit Court Office should have the plat records. We might have right of way plans from a project that occurred at that location. So I could, I could certainly see if we had that information at 153 and 360.
I can go make a visit.
Mm-hmm.
Is this, is this resolution anywhere near moving forward or what's the board's pleasure? Do we want to? You got any more discussion points?
Since we discussed it, I don't know whether it's the discussion or whether it's the cold weather. It looks like the signs have slowed down on being put up. I'll tell you that.
The snowplows got them. We'll see them when it thaws out.
Yeah.
Mailboxes.
Well, this kind of started the discussion, Ms. Worley. Thank you for putting all this in there. I don't feel the board is in a position to take action right now. I think it still needs to be some discussion, some questions answered.
I think we need to look at the clerk's office.
Okay.
Get some distances.
Isn't generally ditch to ditch land?
Yeah, on the 30, right, the backside of the ditch. It gives us enough space to maintain the ditch.
I wouldn't mind having a public hearing about it in an upcoming meeting. Not that we intend then to go like a meeting, we go ahead and enact it. But public hearing for the purpose of a public hearing, get citizen input on, you know, they see a draft. And what are, what are the thoughts, needs, change, potential changes, et cetera? I think that could, that could be helpful.
Because I know I've heard in the past, some older folks say that I don't go to the center right now. Well, yeah, I know that ain't right, but that, you know, that's, and Mr. Easter has a good idea there to let the public know that we're looking at this so that we don't have to hear it down the road that I didn't know, you know?
Well, why don't we, why don't we take about a month? Mr. Robinson can ask some questions, find some distances. Staff can prepare a draft ordinance change. We'll revisit it next month and get something we can work with. And then we'll proceed on with the public hand ordinances and regular processes. I don't think we need to take an action on that. Was everybody cool with just gathering some more information?
So, Mr. Chair, I want to clarify, I don't think this takes an ordinance.
Okay.
It's an agreement with the Commissioner of Highway. So it's a VDOT sort of template agreement. So the agreement is what it is. I think in other counties do do this. I think my point of view is the question is how would you implement it? Right? So that's, that's the staff question. Because then suddenly county is taking on the responsibility of gathering up signs of the VDOT right of way that aren't allowed to be there. So that's how would it be done? What would it cost? Who would do it? That's the more salient thing.
I see him. I don't pick him up.
That was buried in that chain. I think it looks tragic when they, so otherwise the agreement is pretty.
That's good clarity. Thank you. Well, that works well with your plan. You just said to, to for staff to make that specific point of the how.
I still have, I still think we ought to have a public hand because let everybody know.
Yeah, we can have a hearing.
And then we can, we can move on, but we'll, we'll put that from further discussion next month on the agenda. And we'll have some of them questions that Todd has answered. Staff can answer the questions and we'll move on from there. Like good?
Where do I look in the clerk's office?
I don't know that answer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Brings it to the school board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Monday. The end of December K-12 enrollment was 1507, pre-K-12 enrollment 1577, and ADM was 1517. At the January school board meeting, the board elected Dr. Sarah Tanner Anderson to continue to serve as chair and Dr. David Garrity to continue to serve as vice chair. The board will continue to meet on the second Monday of each month. Dr. Tanner Anderson will serve as the board member for Code RVA. Dr. Erie will serve as the board member for the Appomattox Regional Governor's School. Mrs. Whittington will serve as the board member for the Governor's School of Southside, Virginia. Dr. Garrity, Dr. Erie, and Ms. Fletcher will serve as board members for the Amelia and Ottawa Technical Center Joint Board. During the January board meeting, the teacher of the year for each school was recognized. Ms. Crystal Cook is teacher of the year for the elementary school. Ms. Selina Watley is teacher of the year for the middle school. And Ms. Michelle McDonald is teacher of the year for the high school and was also named teacher of the year for Amelia County Public Schools. Also at the January board meeting, the board heard presentations on teacher licensure and recruitment, the December 1 Special Education Child Count, and a recent budget survey. The secondary course catalog and the instructional calendar for the 2526 school year were approved as part of the new budget process for FY26. In your board packet, you have December financial reports and Mr. Trump is here to give some presentations.
Good evening. Tonight I'm sharing with you the December FY25 finance reports. To be meeting our goals, revenue expenditures should be about 43.27%. We are very close to that figure at 42.8%. The textbook fund expenditures remain at 40.07%. In funds four and five for all in construction, we're at 35.65% and 2.35% respectively. And the cafeteria fund expenditures are at 27.76% currently. I have some brief updates regarding our ADM and FY25 budget. The governor's proposed budget amendments for FY26 were published over the winter break, early January, and VDOE staff released an update of state funding calculations as of January 14th. The most immediate useful information included within this was a confirmation of our projected ADM and state revenues. So, we've been talking about ADM and state revenues for quite some time since last spring. Our original state projection for ADM last spring was 1458.35. As you know, I argued with stringently. And we settled close to that at 1500. In the updated school division tool, our estimated ADM is 1518 by state numbers. Remember, our original local number was 1515. My current local projection is 1514.25, which is just slightly below the 1517 average that Dr. Harper just gave. That results in very minimal changes to state funding and, and our figures for, from the state, including some changes to sales tax projections as well. With a total funding change projected for the school on the calc tool of $1,514. I think out of a almost $25 million budget, that's a pretty close to bullseye, about as close as you can get. As we work on our budget, we are going to be starting with the FY26 estimates from that calculations template. However, a significant number of budget amendments provide, are, have been provided with additional funds projected for schools that are in the legislature currently and being proposed in the current legislative session. And it's quite possible that we'll see some additional state funding at the conclusion of this budget cycle. One thing that will remain more consistent is our budgeted ADM. At this time, the state projection for FY26 ADM barely nearly matches our own projection for this year, coming in at 1514, 1514.8 students. Once again, that's point two away from the 1515 we budgeted at for this year, and that was our planned figure going forward because it closely aligns with where we seem to be landing this year. Barring drastic shifts in our school enrollment in the next few months, our final budget ADM for FY26 should not move far from where we are currently.
Congratulations. That's very, very good.
It has to do with a lot of factors that are not in our control and can't be projected. So some of that is just dumb luck, I'll say it. But I will say that we work hard trying to figure out the best way to make those estimates so we can give y'all as accurate information as we can when we're guessing at the future. So, the next item I have a quick update on, as we know, I'm shared in that packet. At the last, at the last meeting, there was an appropriations request from the schools to support an additional security grant award. To be clear, we had originally appropriated in our budget as developed, $75,000 in anticipated revenue from the state. The total award for that program ended up being the full amount at $250,000 in state funds. The local match that we had incorporated into the current budget was $25,000. The local match for the full award, which we did not anticipate receiving this year, was, is $62,500, which is why the appropriations request, that was before you last month, closed that gap with a request of $175,000 in state funds be appropriated and $37,500 in local funds appropriated to meet that local match. One thing we'll be clear on in terms of why we're asking for more is, as you know, we hit our ADM target for our budget. Well, not as a budget, as the board graciously approved an appropriation to support in, earlier this fall, from our original 1500 ADM. Because this is a grant program that requires a local match from funds that are not already funded and supported with a local match. So currently, as we're being budgeted at ADM, that means that all funds that we're budgeting with are state funds or local funds that are already obligated to match those state funds. So we're looking for additional funds that would, we can't take from that, we can't use state funds to match state funds. We can't use the local funds that are already matching state funds to match other state funds, which is why we have this additional request before you. What I've provided for, for you in that summary is a more, I guess, more explanatory view of what that security grant actually would fund, breaking it down by school and by item, specifically kind of highlighting the bang for your buck you might get by approving these projects. As you can see, for each of the projects, we have a quick rationale. So for example, at the elementary school, well, actually I'll talk about them as a block. At each school, the largest item that was in this grant, kind of our pie in the sky, if everything gets approved, this would be an awesome thing to add for our schools, is upgraded classroom security door hardware. Currently, we're still using manual keys for all of our, for all of our classrooms and all of our, the majority of our building doors. This grant would allow at the cost of $15,000 in local funds and $60,000 in state funds, the ability to upgrade all classroom doors to RFID key cards that could be tied to individual employees, which will not only help with security after the fact, knowing who came and went from buildings, but also eliminate the risk of doors just being left unlocked before ease of use and access because they could automatically be set to lock as soon as they're closed, just the default is they automatically lock and a key card opens it up. Also, in terms of working with local EMS and police and other safety staff, would be that there's a lot more, it's a, it's a difficult thing to part with a physical key for a physical lock because if, once you give that out, if that gets lost and it's not reported, the only way to fix that is to replace all the keys, replace the lock entirely, rekey everything, which can be an expensive proposition. With RFID key cards, it's cheaper to replace one key card. If an employee leaves and we real, and we don't get the key card back, it's a simple login to a computer and turn it off. We can manage access individually. We can give expanded and increased access to different, you know, user groups within that and really just makes things considerably more functional and more secure as we go through each day. You can see for each piece, you know, the, what that local match would go towards for each part of it. What the state funding for that part is, you can really see what, not just the investment you'd make, but how much you get for those county dollars to be appropriated. One thing I did want to point out about this appropriations request previously is this is what was in the application. And if you look at the, the total for it, the total expenditure in the application was $335,000. One of the reasons that was done, why we went over and above what we knew could be awarded, was because in previous iterations of the grant, different priorities have been picked by the state. It may have been elementary projects are what they're going to support. Or it may have been they're going to support security door hardware, but they might not support radios or vice versa. So going above and beyond allowed space for them to say, if they said no to a certain subclass of project, we could still get more money than simply say, if you build it just to the max and they cut off a portion of the project, we may end up being cut out of something that could have been approved and lose out on the maximum that could have been available. As you saw last month, the appropriation request was written only to maximize the grant. It would be an additional $22,500 to get everything on here from the locality, and that's not what we're asking for. What we wanted to ask for last month was simply the ability to maximize those state dollars that are available to us.
So just, just to be clear, the yellow then are the ones that you would not pursue because they don't fit within the amount.
Correct. If, if we were to get the full appropriation, the yellow are the ones that kind of be the first ones on the chopping block. Once again, when we do this application, it's based on estimates. If those estimates came in low, we'd be able to fold those back in and get the state match and maximize that. If things came in high, we might have to make other decisions. But that is kind of how we would go forward that because also at smaller items, there are the things we might be able to fit within other areas that we already have, you know, state funding available for. But once again, this is an opportunity to meet that highest state match. I, oh, go ahead.
Did you prioritize, so we talked about already in the budget is what you estimated was the getting 100,000, 75,000, 80,000, 20,000. Match. Did you prioritize among the remaining green then what you would do with the 100,000 that's already been, been budgeted?
Because of the projects that are here, it's a pretty simple proposition. The security door hardware would have to go. If you look at the total, it's $15,000 in estimated local match to do all three schools. Our $50,000 per school to do each one, that $45,000 is above what we have in local matching funds. So we'd have to pick of those lower portions and if those went, we could afford everything else, including the radios, pretty much. So that's basically how it'd work. Unfortunately, you know.
I could see, I mean, I think there are options for you, man, because I could see, I could see on the other hand that you say you're going to proceed with all of the green projects at the elementary school, for example. You know, and get those, get those knocked out already. And, you know, that would at least give a, one of the three schools the upgraded doors and everything, kind of a model to keep following through. It's yours to choose, to be clear. We don't get it all the administrative side of asking a question, not advising how to spend the individual money because it's not our job. But, um, curious on that. I think it's, I think it's helpful to see the specifics of how you would spend it. That's definitely what we asked for from last month. And I think then we can continue to take that under advisement as we move forward with a lot of the information, including that our next topic on our agenda today is where we stand, more detail from a fiscal standpoint.
Yeah, as we said, we'd be continuing this, the discussion, I understand, with the audit still getting closer and closer by the day to being complete, having that information to, to know exactly how to direct your actions, understand if it's going to delay. The only concern we have on continuing delays too far into the future is simply just by default, having the time to go through procurement and make plans for those bigger things, especially if it was replacing all door locks. But we also understand you need the right information to write, to make the right decisions. If there's no other questions about that security grant information, I do have an update on CIP. I know it's jumping the gun on the agenda a little bit by about an item, but Mr. Monday did ask that we address the school's CIP project. That's as part of the schools, as a CIP update, because we of course have the best information on that. What's been shared with the county regarding the status of our CIP project, of the current CIP project, is that we have one project from previous fiscal years that's still active and not complete. The only project we have that is continuing forward is the currently frozen CTE center project. That was appropriated 8.1 million. So at this time, if you look in your reports, no funds have been spent for the construction of that project yet. As you know, we also had a little more than 1.4 million, or actually a little less than 1.4 million dollars in state construction money for the schools to utilize, and that's what we would start working with first. Slightly before this was, uh, before the project was put on hold in April, we entered into a contract for architectural design services. That's what you're seeing in that Fund Five construction expenditure. To note, when you see two point three five percent of that, that's two point three five percent of this year's appropriation, which doesn't, which is carryover from last year, which is less about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in expenditures last year for design. So to date, we've spent a hundred seventy thousand four hundred thirty dollars towards the design of that project. The total of that project, of the design of that project, the cost for that contract was seven hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, and that's a contract that we are still tied into. In the submitted FY twenty-six CIP, we were asked to include frozen projects again, so that one was included. Unfortunately though, it does include an additional request of two million nine hundred thirty thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars in additional funds beyond the eight point one million. This is an increase based on a number of factors arising during the design phase of the project, which is including but not limited to an escalation in costs due to the delayed timeline, due to the freeze and some other factors. We are also running into some concerns with the actual site and additional costs of it having it on the high school campus, but these are all things that are kind of in flux. But at this point, we're kind of at a pause in the design contract where we've expended considerable funds. We're still obligated to spend considerable funds, but until we know the direction of the board with either, you know, I believe the initial direction to freeze this project said that the freeze would end FY twenty-five and unfreeze in FY twenty-six. But without knowing the action on the additional funds, you know, that kind of is, it's going to have a significant effect on shaping the, uh, the remainder of the design phases of the project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Move into the mid-year financial report. Ms. Pond. How you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And Mr. Monday, I'm doing very well. Thank you very much for asking. How are you all?
Good.
Very good. I heard you asked me to pre, uh, first present the mid-year review. Today, I am planning to share with the, with Mr. Chairman and the board members. In addition to mid-year review, will be the audit results. Including, oh, hang on just a second. Let me just go ahead and share. Can you see my screen?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Sorry for the delay. I plan to first share the audit, so I have to switch. Okay. Including in the update, they're quickly, originally, we did not get a copy of the year-end audit, uh, report. I was planning to share with you a promise from the auditor that we, that they will deliver the year-end report sometime at the end of January, which they, the promise has been fulfilled. All right, um, before we start with the mid-year review, I want to quickly update, I shall not take a lot of time on the budget process update. This is the calendar that we plan to follow. We are right on the plan. We completed the collection of the CIP items along with the, the request from each department on operational requests. We have just finished the update of the personnel cost into each departmental request, and that shall be circulated pretty soon, um, maybe by the early next week. And Mr. Monday planned to meet with each department on their request, uh, early at the beginning of February. Also, along with that update, CIP listing was shared with the commission, planning commission. Thank you. All right, um, let's quickly touch on the current month that we just completed, December versus November. Everything went as planned. We continue to incur, uh, window payment and payroll along with a transfer to social services. Revenue stream is slightly lower, but still remains strong. All right, now this is where we need to be, FY twenty-five expenditure, um, forecast, uh, projection throughout. We, I have a clean cut in terms of mid-year, so we had actual six months, and I tried to protect the remaining six months for both expenditures and, um, revenue. So over here, there are three sections. The orange color is FY twenty-five estimate, or you can call protection, uh, whatever is easy for you. Personnel cost basically is contractual agreement with our employees. They sign up to work for the county, so that part is very, very clean. So the green bar is the first half of the year. We incurred to date eight point five million, slightly lower than, than that, and I projected the remaining half of the year to be about eight point four million. So slightly different, uh, than the first half because I took in a lot of, um, I went through line by line to make sure that I don't miss out on any estimation for year end. That number includes also benefits and any new hire that started like up to July first. So we can just simply multiply by two to gross up the cost. People came in, people went out, you know, um, all of those changes that have to factor in carefully. Now, as to the baseline activities, those are something like professional services, anything beyond personnel cost. Again, I tried to be very, very conservative. The first half of the year, we spent seventeen point three. It sounded like a lot, but still we, we are on plan, uh, and, uh, in alignment of, of our budget for the year. The remaining, um, between January to the end of the year, like June thirty, currently based on the facts and all the information that I have on hand, I projected that to be sixteen point four million. So all in all, um, it's still on plan relative to what we had budgeted and what the board had approved. So I cut the budget in mind when I did the projection for revenue and also for expenditures. So the screen that you have right now is on the expenditure, so the next one will be on the revenue. Unless you have any questions for me, I will move on to the next slide. All right, I, I'm not sure if you can see that the color is very light. Please focus on the first slide item and the last one. What they are is really the first slide item, I mean, the first straight line, uh, is very linear. That is a co, combining effect of the first half and the, uh, the estimation for FY twenty-five estimate, and the last linear line on the chart is the FY twenty-five budget plus any appropriations that came in, uh, during the first half of the year. So as you can see that if you draw like two lines, at the, uh, on the left and on the right, they are very, very, very parallel. So we, we are very, very conservative given the situation we are in, so that's the best that I can come up with. So again, revenue remain to be strong, even though, um, we expect that to be higher. It's better to be conservative rather than not to be realistic about that because we might not be able to realize that. And, uh, the local portion on that does help significantly, significantly for this revenue estimate work. Any questions on the revenue? If not, that pretty much should conclude the estimating, uh, the estimation for the year, mid-year for both revenue and expenditure. We are looking good and we should end the year with no deficit. The assumption and the projection were made based on the information I had as of two weeks ago. Over here is a look back in terms of what I had shared with the board, uh, in the month of November. It still remained active because you had an advance bid into the month of December. I didn't have a chance to update this slide, but it should not deviate much from the actual December, um, that, um, we just completed. So it still gives us a good sense of the collection on taxes and the seasonality of the collection. And over here, continue on on real estate tax. Again, uh, as you can see, it really gave us a story on where we are, where we wanted to be and how it happened in the past. Uh, over here is just my conclusion in terms of, um, how we will be ending the year of FY twenty-five. We still have six months between now and June to firm up and keep monitoring and tracking, uh, the actual collection that came, uh, that will be coming in along with the remaining part of the year to keep tracking. I will say that overall, all departments have been very, very, very strict with their appetite in terms of expenditure. So, uh, kudos to all of them, including the board members. Thank you. Any questions on the protection?
No, ma'am. Just like December was a good month, which was what we would expect.
And then, um, when I, I know I must apologize that we did not get a chance to really close the month of November. Therefore, any bright, uh, ledger reports that I share with the board, even though it read December current month, it's really two months, not one month. It has a combination of November and December. We will try our very best to close the month on time, but we have so many competing priorities, so we have to look at costs and benefits. Thank you. So over here is the same slide, got to show in, you know, um, in simple term, I'll be on plan, below plan or above plan, yes, they're on plan. And thank you on that update. Short, I go on to the next two critical updates.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Let me just close this.
Anybody have any questions of what we've seen so far? Anybody need Mr. Monday to explain or anything?
No, I'm going to spend a little more time looking through. I wanted to hear all she had to say, and then I'll probably shoot her a couple of questions. All fine. I'm good for you.
If you have questions, you can email Mr. Monday. Uh, you can, um, you can have a conference call, team meeting, uh, anytime, so I'll be available for you. Thank you. All right, uh, on here, let me just maximize the screen. I'm very, very pleased that we have completed the FY twenty-four audit, and, uh, let me just go ahead and maximize the screen somewhere. Issues, I show why. Okay, yeah, we got, all right, good news. We can now say officially that we are done with FY twenty-four audit, even though, a copy of the financial that we received last Friday is still in the draft form. So audit completed, we started late, we completed early. Although that might not meet the December statutory requirement, but we significantly improved the timeline of the audit completion by several months. So that was overall a good accomplishment for the year and for the team, for the county. And again, kudos to the support of the leadership of the management like Mr. Chairman and all council members. A draft copy was given to me late Friday, um, of the year-end report, or commonly known as ACFR, that acronym stands for Accounting, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Uh, since then, it was given, um, before the long holiday, I've been working around the clock to get the product to, uh, the team here. And yesterday, we had a notarization, and tonight I will get a notarization. The revisions are all good. That increased the surplus of the general fund by roughly fifty-five based on fifty-five thousand dollars based on, um, last night version, and there'll be another sixteen thousand dollars for tonight version. So it's all good. And a piece of good news is the county received unmodified clean OPN. That's the highest OPN that auditors can provide to the county based on the audit results. Due to the delay of the completion of the FY twenty-three audit, we had the report effect. The county, uh, is considered a high-risk audit, but don't be worried about that because that is, it will be reassessed one year at a time. So for FY twenty-five, if we start our, um, audit work now and try to commit to get the audit done similar to FY twenty-four on time and early, and we should get that, um, high-risk audit classification lifted from, from the county. The, what does it mean in terms of the audit? What does the audit report, um, tells us? So, um, it highlights the need for process improvement to ensure future compliance with audit timelines, which should be met in terms of timeliness. So in terms of internal control, to use the terminology or the language that the auditors, um, come up with, is called significant deficiency. In layman's term, it's pretty much significant internal control deficiencies that comes with like information, documentation, oversight, review and approval, which we know we need to focus on, given limited resources. Ma, also on the right-hand side, FY twenty-four financial results, uh, long awaited for. Thank you for your patience. The numbers are in now. In FY twenty-four, something new and dear to our heart was the safety of our residents and infrastructure maintenance and capital projects. We spent, the county spent a significant amount of, uh, capital project, total, total about five point two million. Three million of which was funded by, uh, the, uh, revenue activities that came in, in the year like, uh, land, landfill fees, and a small portion of that, like zero point six million, uh, transferred from proffer. Thanks to the board, um, it was approved back in April. That helped facilitated the funding of CIP. All in all, for CIP, that resulted in a net deficit of about, um, one point six million. Good news on general fund, the chief operating fund, um, that outperformed other funds, including CIP and, um, the funds below. It had a positive contribution of one point five five based on Friday. Now it's a firm one point six million net increase to our fund balance. Excuse me. In terms of, uh, uh, other funds that is shown below, primarily proffer, uh, as I mentioned about because, uh, there was a transfer approved by the board of point nine. Two third of that was to support CIP and one third of that, meaning point three million, then to support the general fund. That net, after the net out of point two million in fees. Um that net after we net out the point two million in fees earned uh for the year. Uh there was a net decrease of point seven million in fund bounds for the other funds. Any questions? Over here, just more update um in, I tried to be less technical and I got feedback that I'm too technical. I will try my very best to put in non-accounting terminology. Oh yeah, it just more right up on where we ended with our twenty-four. Um just to remind the the board, F I twenty-four started in July first of twenty twenty-three. And ended on June thirty twenty twenty-four. So we have to go back in time. Audit is always about the past. Now over here, uh went on in terms of uh what O P N we got and what work we we have to do. Over here, it's just a quick summary of key audit adjustment for F I twenty-four that were made to general fund. So I tried to put in layman's term. So at the end of year, any fund balances saving uh that uh. Was slapped in the school board fund balance per bylaw that has to come back to the county. And that number was four hundred ninety thousand dollars. Uh and then the next item is uh back at the end of F I twenty-three, there was a prepayment of debt service. For water fund of three hundred thirty thousand dollars. So in uh F I twenty-four. Then had to be reclassified um and expensed out for the year. The information didn't come in in time to allow um finance to make a reclass. And the next item, uh audit, comment, I mean August compensation. But typically, there are two theories, either be consistent with the way we have been doing the past. Or to facilitate the accrual process at year-end, if we go with the state report. Meaning uh state accrual report, typically they include July and August. So we included August compensation of sixty-four thousand, not much. So the uh auditor recommended us to reverse that to be consistent with years past. So it's similar situation with laser uh reimbursement from the month of August. Um for Amelia County, for laser, uh there was only uh one month lag. Meaning July reimbursement wa- uh was for June, so August was for July. So therefore, uh one hundred and ten thousand dollars that we accrued to F I twenty-four must be reversed and it had been reversed. So the one, the two above the forty-seven thousand at seventeen had to do with timing, system, process, accounting. So with those, just quickly to give the board uh a background for utility and tax billing. Whenever they will be out, it did not set up the system to recognize the receivable. So at year-end, we have negative receivable, meaning when collection uh was made for utility and taxes. Be reduced the receivable without having any receivable to apply to. So we, I had made that adjustment, but then uh I had to. To fight for gaining the adjustment back, auditors just overlooked, they did not get. Uh they did not see those adjustments. Those are the two that I got managed to get back uh and reverse them um yesterday. So collectively, we got back close to sixty thousand dollars. And now lastly, small amount, collectively, six thousand dollar adjustment related to other adjustment, including. V R S pension, O P A, so it has to be precise. If you go down to detail, some, somebody are like seventeen dollar adjustment, that's the lowest. So it's very precise down to the pennies. So when it comes to retirement, we don't mess with that. So anyway, so net-net was the uh general fund net increase. In revenue of ten thousand dollars. Um in accounting, we tried to reconcile to the pennies, that's where all of these adjustments are.
Thank, thank you. Do you feel the controls are now put in place to prevent those particular errors in the future?
Uh excellent question, sir. Actually, this screen will help.
Okay.
Uh segue into the answers for you. So I will wait until I go through some of the elements that are highlighted here. What are internal controls? In, internal controls touch on many areas of processes and operations. Like segregation of duties. Now the question I will ask, do we have enough resources? No, we don't. So therefore, we requested, we came to the board to ask for. Um more A P uh support, which we had, but uh another um. Headcount that was very much needed or has been very much needed is the accounting and financial management um. Uh staff that is not currently available. So it's something that we might have to discuss further during the budget time. Oversight, what does it mean? Meaning. We shouldn't have always three parties to any processes of prepare, review and approval. Because we are all human, errors tend to happen. So therefore, do we have enough headcount? Might not be. So in the accounting and financial world, when we don't have enough headcount, we have to come up with a different alternative way. To help review and approve. But right now, I think we started, but we are not quite there yet. So again, uh Mr. Monday and I, we had a discussion uh a few days ago uh to. To see how we can address this in a priority listing because soon F I twenty-five will be here. Proper documentation, it might sound like. Beautiful, like, okay, what has it to do with this internal control? For everything that comes through finance or financial world, we have to make sure everything is documented, approved and substantiated. So. We just recently spent small dollar amount to. Address documentation, to make sure every invoice that we pay. We have a, not just a hard copy, but a copy that we can easily access timely. For decision-making and for any type of business needs or for audit purposes. So uh and then policy management review procedures are very much needed as well. Do we have that in place? Even though we have identify, we have to implement and execute. So all of these are in the workplace, you have a lot of work to do. Communication touch on many ways, written, verbal, timely, effective communication. If we don't communicate, we will have redundancy, we will not do things in time, you know, things like that. All of these are big words, but they mean something. Collectively, it's called internal controls. Resource change management is very essential. If we depend on a key person dependency, when anything were to happen to that individual and we experienced that lesson a month ago. It's very essential to pay payroll, to pay vendors, to pay anything that we have to pay, right? If we have only one person to process that, we are at risk. So that's where auditors is coming from. It's all for us, not for auditors. So change management. This is con- continuing management on, you know, is also essential. We have to make sure we are are on standby. Right now, it's the season for it. If snowfall, we have snowstorm, we have anything that happen, we can afford to have a downtime for collection. Because collection is the backbone of our spending of our public service to our residents. So all of these are critical. And let's go on. Modern technology, application, relevant financial system, they are all. Very much needed and critical to the success of the county. Information I mentioned, even though it's a simple thing, if we don't have the information, or we do, but we don't have a clear information or timely information. We will not be able to complete what we are set to do. So all of these are ultimately management responsibilities and accountability. Risk management can swing in any direction if you're not careful. You're standing on an action and if you are not careful, it can fall and get hurt. So on the far right, it's pretty much in terms of, I know it's technical, so it's either material weakness or significant deficiency. I follow material weakness in red because it's more serious than significant deficiency. Right now, we have significant deficiency, we have controls, but they are not as good as we wanted that to be, they are less effective. And um you know, less severe than the material weakness. And we know why we are there and as long as we know and recognize and um we made aware of. We just have to move forward with all the things I have mentioned. Any questions for me on here? Did I answer very quickly your question? I know there are a lot to take in and digest.
It's a lot. I think we'll see the audit after the draft is probably sometime this week.
Yeah, and you answered it. I think it's just, it's gonna take time to continue following through and see it to completion. Thank you.
Now, I think Mr. I think Mr. Monday has some. He has some ideas on how to improve some things too, so that was gonna be in the work.
That's right. I think, Mr. Chairman, it's important to uh point out, like Pan was telling the board. What you see on the left of the slide that she has up now, that's our corrective action plan. To get to where Mr. Easter was asking about, that's our work list of things that we need to do. And remember, the board allocated an additional position that started back in November. Uh that employee has been with us now for two-plus months and we're starting to turn more work over to her right now. So now that opens up the gate, you notice the top element on there is segregation of duties. So we can now start broadening uh that and then uh we're gonna have the staff develop some policies and procedures. Those will come pretty quick to a deal with accounts payable and the documentation that Pan mentions. And then we'll keep working that action plan until you get your finance director. And then they can help with those areas at the end, management responsibilities, accountability and risk management. So that is the plan that we're working on and we've already started talking about how to implement that.
Good, good.
Thank you. Yeah, things takes time, we should not rush into it. We have to also consider the current state and resources that we have. As long as we are done with F I twenty-four, definitely we, we have to be prepared and kick off all of this to be ready for F I twenty-five. So it's back-to-back and we are backlog, similar to when I first joined the uh. Uh the county as a consultant and I had a lot to look back into twenty-three, even twenty-two and then twenty-four. And now we are behind in twenty-five. Just kind of like be transparent, truly transparent with the board. You're good there? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, over here, there are more um steps in terms of how best to improve that. Actually, the um contract that the board has, uh the county has the amount is on accounting services. It's best to have an independent uh agency to come in and perform internal control review. Even though I can do it, um I am not certified to do the uh an independent review of the county internal controls. And then I highlighted uh a keyword for each element um that I have provided here. Policy, process, procedures, they are all, you know, big words, but they mean something and they are very critical. Communication, definitely it has to happen in all three hundred sixty um degrees. Training professionally, uh trained staff, uh keep them up to date to par and be relevant. Because we are in the world that is moving fast, even though state current, we will lag behind. Control processes, I mentioned, has to do with segregation of duties and then um uh review and approval. All right, over here, it's just small information to share with the board, the end results, the uh audit financial. Uh of the prior two years, F I twenty-three versus F I twenty-four. It's good to have a snapshot of where we were in twenty-three, twenty-four, so that we will be more ready for our F I twenty-five, the remaining half. And um it's a good timing also for F I twenty-four budget that we kick off. So uh start from left to right, um again, orange bars indicating the current year, uh representing the current year. And the green is net change in fund balance. So these are the level information for general fund. Uh C I P and other funds and the, in totality, what they are for all funds that we have, excluding enterprise. Uh if you look at the, on the right-hand side, the last two green bar, it just show whatever we had drawn down on the proper fund. It's pretty much the uh the impact of the reduction in the overall um fund balance. All right, over here is a different look, different take on um the previous screen. Over here, we don't look at the level, but we look at the net change in fund balance again. Uh immediate twenty-three versus twenty-four, it showed that uh. How much we did better in twenty-four, general fund, we had a pickup of one point six million. Uh while we had two point one million uh deficit in the, in a year before. So and then it's a flip-flop on the uh county capital projects because we did not spend uh much in twenty-three. So in other funds, it just speak for um the contribution from proper funds into the other funds. And then overall, we had a drop of point seven or point eight um million for our um. Uh govern- uh governmental funds. All right, um these are just more like, you know, uh to show and confirm substantiate what I have shared. In terms of uh the main sources of revenue, uh I stack on top, you know, gen- general property taxes, again. Compared to two years and the one below are other local taxes. To show uh the percentage of the total for F I twenty-four relative to um what we got. So again, uh it's consistent year after year, so we know how to, uh what to focus, what our target is when we do twenty-five and twenty-six planning. Now over here, it's on the flip side, it's on expenditure. And again, it's consistent with all uh local governments in northern Virginia or nation. Uh public safety along with education, our kids are the top two expenditures uh for any years that you have seen. So at the bottom, it just to confirm that the orange one, meaning we spend more on our C I P. So um that's all I have to share for uh the audit. Uh I tried to condense them in layman's term. If there is still too technical, I apologize for that. Any questions for me? Okay, so one more slide to share. Um let me just close this.
The audit company will present their audit to us next month, right?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll schedule them as soon as they're available to come.
I will reach out to, to them so, so that um you can ask them questions that you may have. Over here, it's just more like recap of key financial elements uh for your quick reference. Um for F I twenty-three, F I twenty-four will help with decision-making when that time comes. In terms of often, quite often, question that we got asked, we put into perspective here for the vote reference. Like reserve, um it's a function of revenue and expenditures, uh expenditure less school appropriation. Uh I know the county uh had a reserve policy in place of thirty percent. That's kind of a maximum of the best practice. The uh low end is fifteen percent. So, you know, anywhere between fifteen and thirty percent reserve, we are good. So uh I highlighted in green the numbers that I would like to emphasize. So I, I know I did not share with you ahead of time, so um you can take it back and look at that. And if you have questions, you can reach back to Mr. Monday, uh me and him together. And um more to it, uh O P M settlement that uh is over a period of. Um fifteen years because we started about years ago in getting the funds in. It's slow amount, it's a collection over time until fiscal year twenty thirty-nine. Um for O P M settlement, in F I twenty-five, we received ten thousand and twenty dollars. Uh to date, we receive about. Uh to date, we receive about, you know, uh it's not much, it's lower than uh seventy thousand. So remain to be collected is about one hundred and sixty three K uh overtime. Again, uh be reminded that this fund, if you don't encumber and use, it can be reverted back. Um APA, we come to the end of the term of APA. Uh in terms of APA, uh the county is on biannual. Uh reporting, given the size of the population and the amount of the award, they are on tier two. So the uh upcoming reporting due from two years ago is at the end of June. So in that report, it's very critical that we commit and obligate any money that is left over. So right now, we we have about one million left. So once we obligate the fund, we have up till December thirty first, twenty twenty six to spend down. And again, if we don't, we have to pay back the um US Treasury on the remaining fund. So uh just to remind um the board and the county. Uh the next one on. December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
I thought we'd already allocated it to the um. All that, I mean, I was on the original harbor. Maybe all that funding was allocated. We can have any left to allocate.
Well, that's before we have to look at that again.
Yeah, I think, um, we need we need some offline looking at that thing because. I don't disagree with you that it hasn't all been spent because the workup like like broadband was the biggest one. But um there shouldn't be anything that's not encumbered or allocated um.
I think I think it might have been allocated. I know it was allocated for broadband, but we haven't spent that much.
Oh, I I agree.
Maybe that's why it's still there.
Yeah, but it's considering twenty six, we will just have to make sure we stay on top of it, so. Yeah, but I think it would be good to make sure our projections are ma- matching up. And that that money is not being double counted in CIP, which I wouldn't be surprised if it is.
And, Mr. Chairman, it could also be a a timing issue that that was the audit for FY twenty four. And you might have made that decision after this financial period closed, and I'm not saying you did. But that's enough for us to look into right there to make sure it's being shown is committed, if that's the case.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ecall fees is about one one million and two more blocks. CIP, I have itemized for you. I heard the school board mentioned CTE of eight point one million. I just got to break down in terms of where we are with the fund balance, our CIP and um what the remaining should be. After the um the two projects that have I been identified on the sheet. And lastly is the prefer we now, after the spending down in FY twenty four, we have a small amount left. Uh in the fund balance. And uh on here, I did not mention is this one hundred and twenty five thousand grand that we received from the solar agreement. So we will make sure that we restrict that fund. Thank you. That's all I have to update for tonight. Uh I will open up a session for questions if you have any. If not, thank you very much.
Is that a question?
We're just not gonna talk to it. We're good.
I think we're good, Tom.
Very good, thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you very much.
You put a lot of work into this. I think we're. Make progress, for sure. All right, we still got one other thing that I asked to put into financial. You know, a month ago, we we had to renegotiate the contract with Torch and we got a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar revenue. I would like to see that go straight into the CIP fund. Apparently, revenues go through the general fund and then when we get to a certain limit, they get transferred over. We have certainly tried that for several years. Getting closer to be able to do it, but I would like to see this deposit that one twenty five right straight into CIP.
Mr. Chair, how about if we just opened up a separate account and started depositing all the CIP into the separate account? Including this check. In that way, it's isolated all the time.
I'm fine with that. I don't. It may not be a separate account, it still may be a CIP account, but it still be building up other than the unrestricted funds.
It's not blended into the general funds. It's in its.
Yeah.
Own account. It's definitely be bad, but.
You know. Are we, what do y'all think about the one twenty five going into that?
I think it needs to.
How about the, how about the uh revenue for the landfill each month?
I guess you go in this, the IP account. That's what it was sold on.
Directly.
Yeah.
You know. All right, we tried to do that. We talked about it for several years, but I think it's time just to pull the trigger to do it. It don't work out, we'll fix it. I think now's a good time to do it with mid-year. So I'd like to have a motion that it states the one twenty five from Torch goes into the CIP. We'll call it the CIP account now for the for the motion. And also the landfill revenue would go into this CIP account every month. I can make that motion if I need to.
We have a motion that we deposit the hundred and twenty five thousand from the solar agreement. And all. Check some waste management into a separate CIP account.
Okay. All right, my motion. Any discussion?
I'm gonna vote against it because it's not consistent with normal ledging financial management practices. Let you know that upfront.
That's.
Very inconsistent with any kind of normal management processes.
Any more discussion?
One have another. It's not, it's not consistent. Problem is you gotta put mix in it.
It's not mixed in the reports. It's very.
It is mixed in the reports.
It's not, doesn't matter. You don't have to follow it today, so let's be. When I bring, when you spring something on in the middle of the meeting, we don't have time to prepare for it, so.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion? And start putting those two revenue sources into the CIP account, raise your hand. All opposed? Hold on one. All right. Board members' activities and reports, we'll hold that, we'll do that, we'll do it all in one, that's the board members' comments. Brings us to the county administrators' report.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, um a few things for consideration this evening. Uh first, starting with waste management for the month of December. The county's uh funds received is two hundred ten thousand eighty five dollars. The CRC report is under tab twelve on page two sixty two. The DMV select report uh was not received initially for the board package, but since it's been provided to the board. If you didn't get a copy of that, Ms. Gunn can can provide that for you. Thank you. And the uh update that I wanted to give you on the opioid funds, um you heard uh Ms. Youssef talk a little bit about that. Uh those are funds that come through the opioids abatement authority. For, it's a very tight list of things that those funds can be used for. In essence, it has to uh take care of uh the problem in your county of jurisdiction. Over the period of time through twenty thirty seven, uh the county is expected to receive two hundred and twenty five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. And then there's an additional approximately a hundred thousand dollars that the county could apply for. And uh again, we can't use this to balance the budget. It cannot be used to supplant funds. It has to be used to help with uh abatement and drug problems specifically related to opioids in this jurisdiction. Uh the staff has been looking at some ideas uh to gather and and to hand you so you can make a decision on how to commit these funds. And to our knowledge, no firm commitments have been made by the board for for the funds that I'm that I can find a a record of. And here are some of the things that 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 we have thought about. The regional county administrators, we've met a few times. Uh Dr. Amon at the Piedmont Health District has done a really good job of facilitating those meetings. All the county administrators, we've heard different proposals from various community groups. Uh we heard a presentation about a uh group home uh from retired judge Cunningham out of Halifax County. About how uh we could participate and join some other localities if that's the direction the county wants to go. I met with a county administrator and assistant county administrator in Powhatan. And heard about a um home very similar to that concept. It's called Recovery Housing that we make a participate with. And I've also just started conversations uh with um Crossroads and any possibilities. And uh Dr. Ahmed has agreed to uh meet with the county staff and. Talk about any way that they might could benefit from those funds. So um in summary, it's information only at this time. I'm just giving you the information as we learn it. And once we have more options that might be available, we'll bring those to you. And we even heard a proposal last week at the regional jail meeting that the superintendent brought up. That uh they might could do some programs and use those funds as well. So again, I'll keep you updated on how that goes. You don't have to make a decision tonight and not next month either. But maybe within about ninety days would probably be when you would have the information in front of you to decide how you wanted to use those funds. And uh the way the staff has been attacking it is we've been trying to gather projects that really checks three boxes. And those three boxes I'd like for you to think about is trying to make a choice that is self-sustaining, that does not require a county match. You, of course, could do a county match, but you you might not want to do that. Uh the second box is definitely you would want it to benefit the citizens of Amelia County. And third and not last is try not to go with a program that has a very burdensome process. You know, you want to create an extra position that all they do is manage the funds. So those are some things that I just thought I would leave you with and again, we'll keep you posted as we evaluate further options. And I believe the uh quarterly reports speak for themselves. They would all be under tab fifteen. Uh those department managers uh did a really good job of putting those together. If you have any specific questions for our staff, uh please send those to me and we'll get your answers if it's something on the reports that you need further clarification on. And uh, Mr. Chairman, under uh item F, uh I would like to uh read a statement uh to help you continue. Your process in the search for a county administrator. And just so our citizens know to keep them updated as well. Uh the board has connected uh has completed, rather, uh one round of interviews with two candidates for the county administrator's position. And the board has chosen another group of candidates that it will be interviewing soon. And uh from that, uh you have a slate of candidates that you could consider. And make a decision if you think one of those candidates could do the job for the county. But the statement that I would uh like to read gives the board the opportunity to continue doing those interviews. And this statement will be entered into the record. Uh the board hereby announces that the board will or may be interviewing candidates for the county administrator's position. At disclosed or undisclosed locations within the next fifteen days, per Virginia Code two point two dash thirty seven twelve. Section B Bravo. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, sir.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Monday. Well, that brings us to the close of the agenda. Anybody else have any thoughts? We can run through. You want to do your your comments and your board activity at the same time? That would be great. Mr. Jones?
Um at a CRC meeting last week, uh nothing really comes out for me, although I did give Mr. Monday a list of. Grants that's coming available in the next coming year. Uh PSR meeting, uh I don't have much to say about that. I think Mr. Robinson might have something to say about it, but uh. It's think of like a normal meeting, nothing really. It's all a million in any way, shape, form, stuff for one thing, but. And uh I had no comments on nothing else.
Mr. Moore?
Hey, library meeting yesterday. Um main focus was looking for a librarian, for a librarian and uh. Like they're so advertising, but they're gonna um interview a couple pretty soon. Also had the landfill meeting, uh I trans said we had some guests there and uh. They had some comments on uh the smell's been a little bit more potent this go around. Uh we talked with the landfill and threw some ideas out. I think they're gonna try them or at least consider our thoughts and uh. Though anybody's noticed any difference, please let me know. Uh I do want to go back to one of the consent agenda items, the uh spring greening cleanup. Uh just a thought, and I don't know what y'all thinking, but uh. Maybe get with Royce or something instead of a couple of dates between now and May. Or countywide, if any big groups want to do some cleanup and maybe post some pictures or something, just to kind of make it a group effort. I don't know, I I it was just thoughts that we we can all work together and clean the county up a little bit, especially if we got a new county administrator coming in, maybe they're coming up and. I don't know, maybe give someone with it and post pictures and show what different groups are doing. So maybe we can throw that around next meet or something. Uh and uh continue to pray for the ones in the mountains that lost their homes and the ones in California. Uh yesterday was a pretty hard hit on several families in the county, so lift them up in your prayers and uh hope everybody stays warm.
Mr. Robinson?
Uh I have a CPMT meeting tomorrow. The in the PSR meeting, she was planning on coming next month and asking for twenty five hundred dollar appropriation. To fund what they call RAM. Uh it's a group of doctors. They do eye, ear, teeth, health. For low-income families that will be in Cumberland this year. It's all free. And I kind of had an issue about the appropriation, you know, how can we. Deny appropriations. For other departments, but then allow them to come in and ask for money, and it's a good cause, so I made a recommendation to. Uh let me go out and peddle from some businesses to get some donations. So. If anybody wants to make any donations, we'll be glad to take it. We've raised the money that she asked for. Um Rock River Homes made a nice donation. Um. Pretty much that's it as far as meetings go. But please, while we're out driving, we've had two bad accidents in the last uh two days. Please, when you're driving, pay attention, put the phones down, concentrate on the drive. Be safe.
Mr. Easter? Mr. Easter?
Give our continued thanks to Mr. Monday for service in our interim capacity. And we all, I think we all agree, continues to a fabulous job, we really appreciate that. As you mentioned, we are making progress with the selection, but we are being very thoughtful and making sure we don't rush into decisions, so we're very grateful for you being here in the meantime. There were some comments at the beginning about, and you alluded to it there with additional appropriations and things throughout the, since the budget cycles begun, I thought it'd be helpful just to give citizens a little bit of sense of that. But a lot of the appropriations we've done have been kind of administrative in nature, just moving money forward from last year to the next year. Sheriff's Office, library, schools, things like that, and then a few were just transfers from one account to another. The portion that was new spending is around seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. But I want to put it in context, that's less than or right at one point six percent of our total budget. So doesn't make it right or wrong, I just think it helps to put it in context of what that is. That new spending also generated additional revenue because for, for many of those, because they're grants, additional revenue of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, so brought in another almost point eight percent revenue. So it's less than a one percent increase and in total kind of cost when it offsets there. So just a little bit of context there. And the last thing is I want to commend Mr. Robinson on his, like, fine ethics of not voting for himself for the vice chair position, I think that's very appropriate. Thank you.
All right, just regular meetings, had the jail board meeting, had like forty-two residents there last month. Normal, normal meetings, just wish everybody stay, stay safe out there on the roads, kind of did what Todd said. Put the phones down and just concentrate on driving. All right, with that said, we can close the meeting and in normal, right, Mr. Monday, was that statement read? I take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn on the floor, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, motion adjourned.